Have you started the recording?
Yep.
Okay, great. So we'll do a roll call. We'll start with board members. Joe?
Joe O'Connor Hebron.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin Hebron.
I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. Are there any other board members present? Okay. Administration, Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny?
Penny Busco, interim high school principal.
Michael?
Michael Scurry, Principal Ram Middle School.
Karyann?
Karyann Bell, Assistant Principal Ram Middle School.
Christine?
Christine Hartman, Director of People's Services.
I saw Kristen.
Kristen Small, Supervisor of People's Services.
Are there any other administrators on tonight? Okay. And then Eva?
Eva Gallup, Business Manager.
I saw Scott Budson on.
Stephanie, I see Mary.
Oh, excellent.
Scott Budson, Director of Technology.
And then our student reps, Dana?
Dana Shumaleski, Marlboro.
And I think that's it for student reps tonight, right?
Yeah, Lily has a lacrosse game, I think.
Okay. Mary, we're doing roll call?
Yep, Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Any other board members that just came on? No? Okay. All right, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Ed public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to the addition and deletion of agenda items. Are there any items to add or delete? And at this time, we are going to table the executive session, correct, Scott?
Correct.
So?
Rescheduled to the main meeting.
Right. So that will be rescheduled. And then student representative reports.
All right, so this is the best and the worst time of the year for most upperclassmen specifically. AP tests start next week, so I know there's a lot of stress going around about those. I personally forgot about them. College commitments are happening, so that's really exciting for everybody. Everybody's almost committed, because that happens in a few days. Everybody's really excited that we're getting to have some of these end-of-year things like prom and senior outings and stuff. So yeah, I think overall, things are going pretty smoothly. I know there's some people who are a little nervous to come back to school this week because there's not as much enforcement regarding travel restrictions and people having to quarantine or get tested when they come back. But overall, I think people are stressed because of all the testing that's going on right now, but things are going pretty well, so I don't really have a ton for you guys today.
Thank you, Dana. Okay. Number six, board member reflections of Vincent Colonna. I was hoping Rob would get here in time. Hopefully, he will. I'm going to start with a statement from the board. "It is with great sorrow that the Ram Board of Education recognizes the passing of our beloved member, Vin Colonna. Vin was an outstanding member of the Ram Board of Education. His involvement with the facilities, negotiations, and policy subcommittees underscore his dedication to our organization. His expertise in insurance and support for the sports programs and facilities were his most notable contributions to the board. The term 'citizen volunteer' only scratches the surface of all he did for our students, families, and community. It was a privilege and a joy to work with him on the Board of Education. We will always keep his family and friends in our thoughts and prayers. His absence weighs heavily on us tonight as we move forward." Is there anyone else you'd like to make?
Stephanie, I'd like to say a few words. You know, as teachers, paraprofessionals, coaches, and administrators, we typically get to know our families through their children. And I can say without a doubt that Vin and Lisa blessed Ram with four of the most wonderful students to grace the hallways of Ram. Vin loved to fill me in on how Nick, Matt, and Mikey were doing after leaving Ram, and I know how difficult it was that he was not able to support Marissa at each of her games in person this year due to COVID, although I know he watched each of her games through the livestream. As principal, I first got to know Vin as one of our dads, but I soon came to see him as a friend and a colleague. If you did not know Vin and attended a Ram soccer game, or Ram basketball game, or a football game, you might have thought that he was a staff member or one of the athletic directors. Vin was right at home in the microphone at basketball games, not only calling plays, but also inspiring our students when the fan section became a bit quiet. There were more than a few times when one of the officials would ask us to tell Vin to calm it down. Vin always laughed and took it in stride. Vin was certainly the heart and soul of Ram's spirit and gave so much to our athletes and fans alike. Whenever one of our teams qualified for the state tournament, I would count on a phone call from Vin offering to fund a fan bus to whatever school the team was competing at. He would ask me to schedule the bus, and he promised to supply the pizza. Vin made sure that our fans were treated just as well as our athletes. Vin supported all of our students. He recognized that it really was not just athletics that were so important to our students and families, but it was getting involved with our students and the community and providing our students with more opportunities to get involved with Ram, whether it be through athletics, or the arts, or clubs. Vin did so much to bring us all together and to make our students feel part of something bigger than themselves. For me, Vin will always represent the heart and soul of Ram, and I know the impact Vin had on Ram will be part of our community for many years to come.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone else like to speak?
Stephanie, I would. Well, first, I'd like to say that thank you for your words and Scott's words. It's going to be, to you guys, kind of solidified everything in there. But I'll try to do this as best I can. You know, for those who got to know Vinny personally, you knew he was an extremely outgoing, friendly, generous, and truly cared about everyone and would do anything for them. His infectious smile, bubbly personality, sense of family and community defines him for who he was. For those who didn't know Vinny, I'd like to share a few things, a few examples of his time and commitment to the community. Organization of the Nick Yedeshewski Memorial Golf Tournament, you know, when another tragic event in our community that Vinny picked up and ran with it and made the Yedeshewski family feel important and loved. He was a member of the Hebron Youth Baseball for 10 years, where I first met Vinny with my children playing in the Hebron Youth Baseball. He was an active member in his church. He was an active member in the Hebron Republican Town Committee. One of the organizations, the organizers of the Ram Soccer Golf Tournament that was going on for many, many years when Ram was... And so, you know, we needed some money to get some things done. He stepped right in. President of the Ram Sports Boosters, you know, that was just a tremendous takeover from where it was, and he elevated that program to what it has become. And also, as a colleague and member of the Ram Board of Education, where he contributed so many wonderful things for this community. Last but not least, a wonderful father and husband to his four beautiful children, Matt, Nick, Mikey, and Marissa, and his lovely wife Lisa, who will miss him dearly. Vinny always saw the good in most people. He truly loved being involved at Ram, from organizing the buses to DJing warm-ups at so many sporting events at Ram. Vinny was a great friend to so many of us and will always be remembered for the sacrifices he made for his family and his community. I found this little passage today and trying to think about, you know, and reflect a little bit about Vinny. And I saw this, and I thought of him right away. It says, and I think most of us can like live with this or feel this and have some comfort knowing that Vinny's on the other side now. It starts out, it says, "It takes a minute to recognize a special person, an hour to appreciate them, and a day to love them, but it takes an entire lifetime to forget them." So I will always remember Vinny for the great things he did and his time and commitment to our community and to his family and to the Ram family as well. I'm going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Is there anyone else you'd like to say some words?
Stephanie, just very briefly, because I appreciate Joe's profound words, and there's nothing I can say that can match that. I will miss Vinny. I met him on the baseball field with my boys. Refing, bumping is really what he did at baseball. DJing, and even when he wasn't on the board, shouting out over the intercom, "Vote for the Ram budget", you know? I have a picture of Vinny with my son when he was a catcher, and that picture was sent to me from a friend, and I'm going to keep it. And I would just like to thank Vinny and just want to say it was a pleasure to serve him.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other comments?
Yes, this is Mary. I just wanted to say that it's very moving listening to everyone's reflections about Vin. I was actually on the Sports Boosters board with him for a number of years, and you just couldn't help but get swept up with him and what was going on. And just, he kind of just, it was infectious. It was inspiring. You didn't even realize that you, somehow he got you to agree to do things that you never in a million years thought you would be able to do or would do in your lifetime. But he just, he was so positive and so inspiring that you just thought, "Well, if he thinks I can do it, I must be able to do it." So, you know, he really was just that kind of guy that you just couldn't help but want, you know, to work with him. And to, you know, he just was so inspiring, and we're going to miss him so much. And coming back to, you know, joining on this board to work with him was, it was funny, because when I left the Sports Boosters board, I said something about, you know, "Maybe I'll end up, you know, on a, you know, a different board or, you know, working with you again", and here we ended up together again. And I just, I, he's going to be so missed. He was a, just a wonderful human being.
Thank you, Mary. Any others? Okay. Thank you, everyone. All right. Board chair report. I would just like to encourage everyone to get out and vote in the referendum next week. I can't believe it's next week already, but I am hoping for the best. And Scott, Superintendent Report?
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, I'm really pleased to kind of pick up on the theme that Dana started with in that, you know, it does feel like we've at least made a huge stride towards normalcy. And we are, you know, prior to the break, you know, we did have a number of students who we had to quarantine for exposure to COVID outside of Ram. And we're back, and I'm happy to say that the number of cases seems to have come down significantly. We are sponsoring or hosting a vaccine clinic this Thursday and Friday for our students, 16 and older. We have about 540 students who are eligible for the vaccine. Right now, we have about 100 students who are signed up to receive the vaccine during the school day on Thursday or Friday. We have a number of students who have already been vaccinated. So the reason why the number's lower, I think, is because so many of our students have already gone out to get vaccines, and we have a number of those students who will be using our clinic to receive their second shot. So we're really, you know, trying to provide every opportunity possible for our students to have access to vaccines so that we can really push and hopefully accelerate our return to normalcy. And as part of that, we're, we are planning end-of-the-year activities. So right now, we're confident that we're going to have a senior outing that will, that will be able to welcome the entire senior class to enjoy a day at Six Flags. We are, we have our prom planned. The Lions have once again come to our aid, and we have an outdoor prom with a circus tent planned in June. And we're looking at what is going to look like a fairly normal graduation. We're, right now, as you can probably imagine, we're kind of between a number of different masters in terms of which guidelines are we following on any given day. So we have the State Department of Health, which has given us some unique guidelines for graduations, but even with those guidelines, each student will have family members that will be able to attend. We're certainly watching any announcements from the governor that might relax those guidelines even further, increasing the number of folks that will be able to attend graduation. So graduation will look more similar this year, certainly than it did last year. It'll be on the Ram campus. And we have some surprises planned as well. So we'll hold off until all of those are confirmed, but I think there's going to be some things happening that are really going to make it an exciting graduation this year. So we're really happy to see ourselves planning for those end-of-the-year activities rather than trying to plan for something completely different and maybe not, you know, an adequate replacement. One of the, just to kind of pick up on something, some of the actions that the board took earlier this year, the fire doors and the fire damper work. When the board approved that work, just to kind of close that circle, we continue to investigate the need for that work. We reached out and met with Andy Tierney from the town and some people at the state level, and it was confirmed that we needed to move forward with the work. So this past break, last week during the vacation, the firm that's doing the work on the fire doors within the building completed most of that work. There's still a few things that need to be done, some parts they're waiting on, but the vast majority of that work was complete. And then the firm that's going to be completing the work on the fire dampers is planning on proceeding immediately following graduation. They're waiting for some materials, but I think more importantly, they're going to have to be turning off the ventilation system to do some of their work. So we'll wait till school's out before we embark on that work. So that work is moving along well, and will be finished on time.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the consent agenda will have to be tabled until next month because we do not have a quorum to pass it. So we're going to be moving on to the audit presentation. I'd like to welcome the, from Connor and Davy, O'Connor and Davies.
Eva, do you want to introduce our guests?
Sure. So we have Joe and Catherine Paton from PKF O'Connor Davies, and they're going to be speaking about the audit report that you should have received in your packets. And then Mr. Leslie will post on the screen some items for you guys to follow along as Joe is reviewing the audit report.
I'm just going to use this, what's on the screen, just kind of as a guide to kind of walk through the highlights of the audit. It has both the PDF page, if you have that, and then the actual hard copy page. So the first report we're going to talk about is the actual audit report, the annual financial report. Pages one through three of the reports, obviously, opinion on the financials. So it's an unmodified or we call it clean opinion, so we had no problems or issues or scope limitations with completing the audit. Starting on page four is the management discussion analysis. This is a good executive summary of the fiscal year operations. It highlights the significant changes and significant activities that occurred during the year. So starting on page 10, talks about your major fund operations. We'll talk about general fund a little bit later, but the grants fund, just an increase of $1,700 from operations. School lunch was down $38,000 due to COVID, which is pretty consistent with our other clients, all those programs with the less revenue, where most of them had decreases in operations, also was funded from the general fund, if that was necessary, if you have equity to address that. Both the capital improvement fund and capital nonrecurring, the improvement fund had an increase of about $10,500 positive operations. The capital nonrecurring fund had a decrease of $40,251. So this is basically the reason for that, is just the timing of the expenditure as compared to the timing of the funding. So the decrease isn't necessarily a negative thing, because that would have been spending of projects that you had accumulated the money for in prior years. On page 11 of the MTA, it talks about the budgetary highlights, things that were a little bit different. So your excess cost grant was $266,491 higher. Sounds like a good thing, except for that means your special life costs were also probably up more than that. The charges of services were lower by the $126,000. Again, a big part of that was the cafeteria operations. Well, for budgetary, that would have been the cafeteria. So it was just, you know, basically due to COVID, it was just lower fees and lower charges. So the expenditure budget, again, mostly COVID-related. Construction was under by almost $174,000. Central services was under budget by $274,000. Operation maintenance and transportation, the number's $108,151. Again, pretty comparable and common in comparison with the rest of our Board of Ed operations, whether it be regional or per part of the town. Pages 11 and 12 talks about your significant capital asset activity. So air conditioning unit, telecom closet, air handlers, sidewalks, and IT equipment. So those are the major purchases during the year. Long-term debt, you had a net decrease of the $2.26 million. So long-term debt going down is always a positive thing. So starting on page 17 is the general fund operations. As if it's seen the, your assigned fund balance at the end of the year was $1,174,360, and the net change in fund balance was the $754,000, which is on exhibit D. So the net change is basically coming from your revenues over budget in total by the $149,000. Expenditures under budget, we talked about some of those lines, by $822,000. And then there's an appropriation of fund balance to balance the budget of the $215,000. Probably 25 pages plus the footnotes. The only one I'm going to highlight that's any really different than last year is on page 38, the coronavirus contingency notes. So this was a standard note that pretty much all our clients, government, non-government, it was recommended from ASCPA that, because nobody knew really what the long-term impact was, that there was just a note that says that there were some unknowns about how it affected operations going forward. So RSI on page 56 requires supplementary information for the other post-employment benefit plan. Your, as a page, you go with that liability. So the liability did go up, almost $700,000, up to $5.9 million from the $5.3 in the prior year. The differences that were driving that are the difference between expected and actual expenses decreased by the $958,000. But the changes in assumptions, mostly for the discount rate and then changing to more current mortality tables, increased the liability by the $1,451. So those were the two big drivers as far as why that liability increased. Turn over to Catherine to talk about the other reports.
One of the other reports you received was the state single audit. In the state single audit, we tested two programs, Adult Education and the Healthy Food Initiative, and we had no findings or question costs on either of those programs. You also received a communication with those charged with governance, and there we discussed significant estimates, significant disclosures, and that we are independent of the school district. And the last report you received was the recommendations. You'll notice that there's a big improvement from last year, that the significant deficiency on general ledger maintenance was removed. In addition, the, our comment on budget transfer approval was removed as well. So the comments we do have this year, the first one is capital assets. We recommend that the district account for construction and progress activity by project, just tracking the total expenditures for the project as they cross the fiscal year so that they can be added in one lump sum to the capital asset records when the project is complete. The next one is related to purchasing and accounts payable. Once checks are signed, we recommend that they not be returned to the accounts payable clerk and somebody else be responsible for mailing the checks. Relating to payroll, we recommend that an employee other than the payroll clerk be responsible for entering pay rates into the system. Both this one and the last one are just for better segregation of duties. Relating to general ledger maintenance with accounts payable, during the audit, we noted that the accounting system for checks that are processed in July for expenditures that relate to the prior fiscal year, they're recorded as cash transactions versus as accounts payable, which causes the general ledger cash balance not to agree with the bank reconciliation. This entry was corrected in the general fund. We just recommend that this entry be corrected in all funds in future years, and if possible, that the accounting system be corrected so the checks processed are properly recorded as accounts payable at year-end. The second item relates to bank reconciliations. We recommend that all items identified in the bank reconciliation process be recorded in the general ledger. And for education grants, the intergovernmental receivables and unearned revenues were not updated from the prior year. So we just update, we recommend that they be updated from the prior year. And the last item is a best practice that we recommend the district develop and implement a fraud policy. And then just a couple of things to mention. There's two new applicable GASP standards, GASP 84 relating to fiduciary activities. That is relevant for fiscal 2021. The main thing there is to begin evaluating your defined contribution pension plans. And GASP 87 relating to leases will be effective for June 30, 2022, so that you'll want to start gathering your leases to determine how they should be recorded in the financial statements, and we'll be coming out with a template to share with management to help with that determination.
Would you have to answer any questions? Anybody have? Anybody have?
Stephanie, can I ask a question, please? Thank you for your hard work. I don't know, I'm not sure of the staffing that's in the business office. So Scott or anybody might be able to help me, but the transition of some of the duties that you discussed, are there people specifically for those, like to, I think you mentioned about the checks being not signed in accounts payable. Have we allocated or delineated who would do that? And do we have the right staffing for those kinds of tasks?
Eva, do you want to answer that one?
So in all honesty, we have three people in the accounting office. The accounting supervisor, who's also your benefits coordinator. You have the payroll clerk who also handles the deposits for student activity. And then you have the accounts payable clerk. So for the payroll, I guess recommendation that Catherine has pointed out, Jan from, who's also the admin assistant and the HR coordinator or HR generalist, would be able to put in those items. As for check, stuffing checks, that's going to be me.
So Eva, you're talking about doing duties that you wouldn't typically, you wouldn't typically do in order to respond to these recommendations?
Correct.
And I'm wondering too, because we are not the smallest district. I'm assuming these types of responsibilities are recommended for other districts. What is typical for smaller districts where there aren't that many staff in a business office? You know, is it, I know there's a recommendations, but I've worked in some pretty small districts where there might not be that many staff to allocate those kinds of tasks to.
So Catherine or Joe, I think that's more of a question for you guys. So in terms of, I believe what you're trying to allude to, so we have the benefit of being in a school. So worst case scenario, if we needed to pull an admin assistant from the middle school or the high school, we would probably be able to do so. I'm not sure if somebody smaller than us, what they would do in that situation.
Okay, from a recommendation standpoint, these are risks that are being identified. So that's kind of our roles, we're identifying a risk and then give it up to the district to decide if they can implement or how they would implement them. So a lot of times with AP and payroll, if you just kind of flip some of the roles as far as distributing checks, and again, of course, I'm making this statement without actually knowing, you know, the workflow and that type of thing. But that's one of the ways a smaller district would solve if there's payroll checks and AP checks, that they would kind of swap those roles so that they maintain the disregregation. But again, our role is just to make recommendations based upon the risk that we identified. And then again, hopefully you have the ability to do that, to kind of put this segregation in place, because that's one of the higher level risks as far as the recommendations go.
I appreciate that. I'm just checking because I want to make sure that as an advocate for RAM, that we have the right staffing to be able to accomplish what is recommended or what is needed. And sometimes when we, you know, we change what people are doing or we add additional jobs to what they weren't doing, then that can create mistakes. And I don't want that to happen in our, in our financial office, which is run very efficiently and very well. So I just need to double check on that. And I'm hoping that if there is an issue, that Scott or Eva will bring that to us so that we can support what they need to do.
And Kathleen, I think you're exactly right. And, you know, I know Eva mentioned that, you know, we have the benefit of maybe some other staff who occasionally come in and do that. But I know that Eva has been really diligent about ensuring that there's consistency and that it's the same people doing the jobs that need to be done. And the result has been that Eva has picked up some tasks that would not typically be completed by a business manager. And Jan Short, who really kind of fills multiple roles, one, the superintendent's executive assistant, but also the HR person, head of HR, you know, she's picking up some of those roles too. So, you know, as we, as we're identifying what we need to do to ensure that we're following the correct protocol, we are finding that there's a bit of creep into the work that some of our administrators are doing. So it's certainly been a conversation point for us. And I think at some point, there will be some discussion with the board and there needs to be other types of solutions to address those issues.
Stephanie, if I could have a turn?
Go ahead, Joe.
First, Joe, and I'm sorry, the sun's blinding, but the other young lady, you guys have done a great job since you've come on board here. I'm very impressed by the, you know, from where we were four or five years ago to where we are now with the corrective actions and the findings you have brought to our attention. And equally so that what Eva has done to bring us to more of a compliant role. So I think that's, you know, it's a dual role for our auditors to find these weaknesses and have our business manager and the staff correct them and strengthen our checks and balances. So and Kathleen, I think that was a great question. I actually was going to ask the same one, but it's because you guys, you work in the district, so you know how it really works. But, you know, I'm hoping that we can find a solution to not overworking people to the bone. And that would be one of my concerns. But I think it's been really going from these small findings, well, large findings, but from, it seems like we're getting, we're moving in the right direction each and every year. And I'm very impressed with the report. It's been very detailed and you spent a lot of time doing it. You obviously know what you're doing, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add as well, that one of the recommendations being the development information of a fraud policy, that is a policy that we currently do not have amongst our board policies. So even I've been in touch with both ASBO and Shipman and Goodwin, and it won't be at tomorrow's policy meeting, but at the following policy meeting, we will have a policy to bring to the subcommittee to begin reviewing, to put a fraud policy in place to address that deficiency.
Is this the first time we've been asked to establish a fraud policy? Have we been asked in the past to do that or is this something new this year?
I'm assuming that this is a new finding, recommendation that, but in all honesty, that this should have been done in years past because, but it is things that the auditors are working on. Being part of a district that's part of the town, a lot of times the town's fraud policy will dictate what the board of bed does with their boards, but we're standalone, so it's probably something that has not been brought up by a different auditing firm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, that might be a question for the auditors then. Are they, if I understand the question correctly, they are recommending that we implement a fraud policy? Is that one of your findings?
It's one we included as a best practice. We typically do recommend it for any town or district who doesn't have one already. I think in prior years, we were trying to focus on the more significant matters since this one is a best practice.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
In addition, we do have a sample that we can send if you want to include that in, you know, in which we're doing a review, but it's something that we have designed because we made this recommendation, you know, to 40 different clients and a lot of them have implemented. So we can send you the policy. So at least then you'll be a little bit clearer on the types of things that we recommend in the policy. We kind of did a broad fraud policy, but then there are some very specific things that should be included in.
Thank you, Joe. Catherine sent me one today, so that's why we're working on that one.
Could you elaborate on that, Joe? And give us, give us just a quick, maybe just a synopsis of what kind of fraud you're looking at or maybe have you seen in a school, in a school district?
What the policy is aiming at, a couple of different things, because I've done 80 front investigations over the last 20 years and some of, not all in government, but the majority, and all different departments. But the policy starts off to like, what's the chain of command as far as when it's discovered? But also the key thing is that defines what fraud is. So it just takes that off the table. My standard example is, I didn't know I wasn't supposed to take that box of copy paper home. I didn't know that I wasn't supposed to put time on my time sheet that didn't actually work. I thought I was supposed to put eight hours. So these are all things that come out that people don't assume is fraud because they didn't steal cash. So that's the other valuable part of the policy is it says, you know, defines what's considered fraud, what the expected behavior is, what the consequences are, and kind of it's aimed at setting zero tolerance, saying consequences are pretty extreme if fraud does happen. So, I mean, the types of fraud are all over the place, student activities, where you're asked in areas, it's on student activity fraud investigations, cafeteria operation fraud investigation. So we'll talk about the school side. Those are the two higher risk areas.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph and Catherine, are some of those just like law to begin with, like legally, like you should know not to, just the example you gave about the time sheet, like you can't, can't do that? I'm not saying we shouldn't have the policy, but are we covered even without it?
You certainly are, but I mean, the big part of the policy is prevention. So you're setting expectations. It's just that I've heard every excuse in the world, I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know. So that's why the policy kind of takes that off the table, is that when you're hired, here's the policy, here's how we do business, here's the consequences. So it just makes it easier when something goes wrong, that there's none of that conversation that somebody didn't know or didn't equate that to being that. So when it goes to, you know, the attorneys or whatever, whatever you do from a labor standpoint, it just makes that process a lot easier to get to the end.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, John and Catherine, for joining us tonight. Wonderful work. And we really appreciate your work on this. It's very clear and we appreciate you answering our questions, so.
Great, thank you for joining us. You're welcome. Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, moving on to number 11, old business, there is none. And number 12, new business. So hand it back over to Eva for financials.
Okay, so I'm going to start with 12.1A, which is your expenditure and revenue report. So apparently there was a glitch in the system. I'm not sure what happened, but my BOE people services personnel and program report is really your full expenditure report. And then for some reason, the full expenditure didn't come out. So we sent the people services report, the real one. Mr. Leslie sent that out today. I'm not sure what happened there, so I will keep an eye on that and make sure that the reports that I'm actually printing are the ones that I'm supposed to be providing to the board. So as part of, because we had such a large net favorable position in the comments from last meeting about trying to be more transparent, I sort of redid some of the memos that you have seen in tonight's presentations or handouts. So after doing everything based on March 31st, there is currently a net favorable position of $441,893. We are looking to do two items that should be booted on, that the board wanted to move forward in, for taking some of the capital projects out of the budget and utilizing the net favorable projection or position that we're in. So two of those items are for middle school carpet stair treads, and then our March food service invoice would come out of that. And then the next round in May would be for the gym floor protection, and that would also be deducted. And then for future meetings, the April, May, and June food service invoices that I'm projecting out should be approximately $121,887. So when I deduct those from the net favorable position, we would be estimating that there'd be about $180,332 left to the net favorable position. So we're still in the black and we're still doing good. There are no significant changes for the capital improvement and capital nonrecurring fund. I did have a conversation today in regards to the DOT project. So it's awaiting audit, but it turns out that we have not been invoiced for all of the invoices that we're supposed to be paying Hebron, the town of Hebron, for the Luke's project or for the DOT project because they were supposed to be invoicing us. So Mr. Leslie is going to be setting a meeting just so we can recap with Mr. Tierney and just make sure that we're not missing something or something didn't get lost in the mail. But other than that, people services again is tracking all their IEPs and ensuring that their POs are being adjusted accordingly, either up or down, and not done with, so far it's been down. So that's a positive. Are there any questions in regards to the expenditure report?
Stephanie, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Joe.
Eva, could you just elaborate a little bit more on this Hebron with the DOT project? So I understand and the board understands what is the issue, because Hebron, all the money is supposed to go through Hebron, correct?
Correct. So basically, it's their project. So for clarification or for ease of accounting and auditing for the state of Connecticut, it's just easier for the town to bill us whatever portion that we needed to pay in because there was only so much grant money. So we, the board, has taken the time to do contingency planning through the capital nonrecurring account and whatever didn't, the grant didn't cover. So we're just awaiting to make sure that the invoices that BB and Luke's had finalized and the committee had finalized for processing are really paid out from our behalf because we need to pay that. So I'm assuming we owe the town some money and I'm just not sure, like I said, if the invoices were mailed and they just didn't get to us or if there's just some holdup on that end. So I just want to make sure that everything is copacetic and that we're not doing anything we're not supposed to be and that everyone gets what they're supposed to be getting.
Right, but the project was closed out last year, right?
No, the project, well, a calendar year. So in December, around December, November, it was closed out in terms of, it was stamped as completed in terms of, there's no more, there were no more punch list items. So that, in that regard, it was closed out. I'm sure the town of Hebron has paid all the bills from their perspective. So I'm assuming we just owe the town of Hebron some money. I'm just not understanding why the invoice is having come our way.
Yeah, that's kind of funny that that's late. And I would hope that, what is the approval process? Does it mean if they, as far as like an invoice coming in from Luke's now at this juncture, that has to be agreed upon by the DOT, by someone?
Correct, correct, right, right. No, 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 no. So we wouldn't be paying any Luke's invoices directly. So in essence, I'm just looking to reimburse the town of Hebron, because they probably paid out of pocket on our behalf to keep the flow of money and keeping the project moving forward. So from the project being closed, yes, it most likely is closed correctly, and there's no issues there. It's us needing to settle up with the town, because I'm sure the town will be looking for some money shortly.
Okay, I understand that piece too, but I'm just making a point that if these invoices are coming in at this juncture now, what is that approval process with the town? I mean, is it coming back to us as a board? Or is the town of Hebron saying, oh, we, you know? What I don't want to get into is that our contingency is, we get close to having nothing left, you know what I mean? That's, I'm looking at the approval process of these invoices coming in, that the town is approving on our behalf, that number one, they're agreed upon from the board.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying. So during the committee process, or during the project itself, we had weekly meetings that we discussed the invoices. So upon closure, there should be no new invoices, and any meeting minutes that we had would reflect what the agreed upon invoices were at that time. So we were given a number in terms of what to encumber, and I noticed the encumbrance doesn't seem to be moving. That's basically what my concern is.
Yeah, so Joe, these aren't new invoices from Luke's. These are, you know, the project was closed out, so there's no additional invoices coming in. This is just making sure that Hebron has closed all of their circles and properly billed us for any invoices that have already been, you know, delivered before the end of the project, and we're just making sure that we're up to date with Hebron in terms of covering whatever expenditures they've had that we need to cover. And Eva's correct, you know, the contingency number has remained higher than we had anticipated. So we're anticipating there's still some money to be owed to Hebron. Not as a result of new or invoices that haven't been delivered yet, but invoices that have already been paid on Hebron's side of things.
Right, but I follow that. But again, I don't know why, I think to Eva's point, like, why? We're in May now, and we're not getting the invoices. So obviously, it's some issue. But if we closed the project, we finished it in the summer, and, you know, we agreed on some of those in a meeting. My last meeting I attended with Luke's was, they were going to take some cuts and assume some of the overages that we went through. And I just want to make sure that that's still legit, you know what I mean? That we're not in, you know, they forgot about that, and then we get an invoice for something that we agreed upon that was not, you know, invoiced correctly. And that's all I'm after, is that. I mean, taking it five months later, that's on Hebron, I guess. But is there a timeframe that we have to pay them by? By the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah, by the end of the fiscal year. So that's why I just wanted to have a meeting with Mr. Tierney, just to make sure that if there were invoices that were mailed to us in terms of from the town to us, not from Luke's or BB's, but from the town to us, that we received them all. In essence, I know before anything was finalized and sent over to the state for completion, or that it was marked as completed, Mr. Leslie, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Tierney, and myself sat in a meeting and made sure that all the credits that Luke's and BB had negotiated were, and not billed to us. So we sort of reviewed that thoroughly, I believe. So I think we're good from that. I think it's more so just the town and RAN that needs to settle up.
And that last point here is that that also hurts us as far as cash flow goes, because when does the audit start?
So they usually are going to start between May and June. I'm actually surprised I haven't received notice that they're going to start coming to look at items. However, the state audit is different for the DOT project, so I'm not sure about when that is supposed to actually transpire.
Yeah, that would be helpful to know for the board, I think, because once we pay Hebron and we're done with the invoices, and we're what we think is closed out, then that process should start with the audit, and we should know the timeframe, because once that's completed, we'll have, hopefully, some additional funds that we can move forward to some other projects. Thank you. If nobody else has any other questions, I have some more.
Go ahead, Joe.
I know there's probably a high degree of confidence that your projection of 121, call it 122, which is about $40,629 a month for the food. Is this based on, this number based on the last three months? Is that how you come up with the number?
No, so actually, Witsen's actually helps me calculate this, because they actually run their own budgets in terms of, it's their staff and they're operating hourly, and their costs that they see first. So they actually have a budget that they have in place. So they actually helped me calculate this. So they took this based on days left in the school year, knowing that there'd be no, or hoping that there are no more remote learning days, taking the projection and ensuring that, you know, there's what half-days, if we'll be serving lunches on half-days, to-go kind of items, or what other extenuating circumstances there might be.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question I have was on the People's Services. So are we, I don't have it in front of me, but memory serves me, I think our budget was, was it $6 million or something?
It's 6.3 million.
And we're over by almost, what, $750,000, is that correct? Based on what I see in the report? And we have like thirty-something percent left, or what was it, a million dollars left?
So, oh, you mean on the, so, okay, so let's try this again. So are you speaking of People's Services in particular? Or are you speaking in terms of the full expenditure report?
Scott, could you, because I don't have it. Could you, would you be able to present the budget, the sheet you sent us later? Just the People's Services budget? Please. It was the last page.
So there's 4.27% left to expand, or 303,000. That is unencumbered at this point in time.
Okay, yep, that's right. So do we have a projection on that?
So that is all-inclusive of when I do the projections. But as I stated, that the ladies or the department, People's Services Department, has been doing a phenomenal job in terms of tracking their expenditures. And they're actually doing a great job of trying to keep kids in district and ensuring that we provide the services, so we don't have to place them out of district at higher costs. They have a couple that they believe might be going out of district, but all of that has been factored into the projection.
Okay, so when I looked at that, there was a couple of high-dollar costs there for health insurance. Can I get an understanding of what the, I think it was like two of the line items? And I don't, again, I don't have it in front of me, but I thought they were like $77,000 each for health insurance. Is that student health insurance, or is that like, do we bring in new staff?
Health insurance would be our, for employees or staff. And I can take a closer look and try to get back to you with some information. I'm not just going to try to wing in terms of what the question might be in terms of health insurance itself. So Scott, actually, if you scroll down to, the object code would be in the twos, two-point, slow it down, oops. Oh, you know what, is it sorted that way? It's not sorted that way. Oh, yes, it is. Nope, 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 yep. So there's employee contribution there for FICA. It actually might be sorted by location. Oh, go up, 210, 220. Oh, there's some more. Yeah, so it's sorted by location, it's not sorted by.
But the reason I'm bringing it up, Eva, you can get back to me, but we didn't budget for it. It wasn't one of the budgeted items, that's why I'm bringing it up. And I'm wondering why, what's, why are we looking at it?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I understand what you're saying. No, 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 it's not that we didn't budget for it. Okay, I'm going to take a step back and back up here. Our new system, so the new financial system that we're in, and for reporting purposes to the state of Connecticut, based on the state of Connecticut's request, based on the federal government's request for information, is we need to break everything out by location and/or program, programmatic kind of expenditure reporting. So what you see is, when we budgeted in the old system, we did one line for benefits. And when we transitioned over to the new system, I'm now spreading it out based on where it's actually spent. So I understand what you're saying, is that there's no budget dollar amount? You're correct, there was no singletary budget dollar amount. It was all in one line item, and now I'm spreading it out to the correct line items.
Okay, so that makes it, so the way I perceived it was that it was an addition to the budget, and that was part of your overage.
No, 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 it's not, it's not in addition, no. It was budgeted for fully in one line, and now I just have to break it out. It's not just in the special ed, it's throughout the whole budget, it's through the whole district. So wherever there's a salary line, there has to be a correlating benefit line.
Okay, is that something that we're going to be seeing for the foreseeable future? Or is that something that you?
No, because moving forward, we budget, so in this, for the 21, what year are we in? 22, 21, 22 budget year, so the one that everyone's going to vote on on May 4th, that is accurately put out in each line. So you're not going to see these transfers. This was just a catch-up year, because we were in between.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions on the net favorable, or on the net projections?
No, just, when do you think you'll hear from the town? Because June 30th will come up quick, and you usually start closing out, you know, the school anyways. So are you confident that you'll have that information and be able to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, in a week or two, I'm sure we'll meet, and we'll have it all ironed out. So there's no worries there. So if we can move forward to the student activity report, you will notice that we are doing well. There had, due to a timing of a deposit, the high school store was overdrawn by $375, but that, you will notice in April, will be rectified, so there are no worries there. Everything balances to the bank. Are there any questions in terms of the high school and middle school student activity report?
There's no fraud there, is there?
Well, I'm doing my best to stay on top of people, I grow a lot, but I think everybody's learning that, so.
All right, very good.
Okay, and I seem to be missing the food service. Oh, no, it's right in front of my nose. Nope, that's transfers. Where is my food service? Okay, well, I seem to be missing my food service report to the board. I'm not sure why. In my packet that got handed out. But in all honesty, what, okay, so the food service, we are trending well, to be honest with you. Since we've been back, the students are partaking of the food. We are serving more, and we seem to be doing well. And I am sorry that, for some reason, that report does not seem to be in your packet. So we're going to have to do a better job of getting that information broken out.
Is it a memo?
Yeah, it's a memo, and it has a spreadsheet to it. But it's not the transfer one, because I redid exactly what you guys were looking for to try to be more transparent. And I apologize, but I'll have Mr. Leslie forward that tomorrow. I was actually proud of myself and hoping that you guys would notice. I'm trying to find it here, so I can, in my records, so that I could review it with you guys. I'm still connecting, sorry. Yeah, I don't know what happened, I guess break week wasn't good for us. In putting this packet together. But, so. Where is my food service folder? There's my food service folder. So basically, what I was doing for, moving forward for food service, is I am doing, oh, come on, computer, work with me. I'm doing, and I don't want to misspeak as to what I called it, so that's why I'm trying to find my document. It is a, come on, Excel, it is a Food Services Income Statement. And so now, you're actually going to see the whole food service from the month of July through the current month that we're in. And you're going to see fiscal year-to-date totals. You're going to see the revenue broken out in terms of what sales, catering, the miscellaneous income refunds, the vending machine sales, and state reimbursement and interest. Then you're also going to see the expenses that we carry, which are the food service operating costs, the POS software system, utilities to the Board of Ed, and any equipment or supplies that we purchase on behalf of the cafeteria. So as of March 31st, you have ending fund balance of negative $41,696.84. So we are running at a loss currently. And the loss itself, the net loss from July 1st through March 31st is $102,620. So that would have helped substantiate what we were trying to, what we were trying to show in terms of why we were trying to put these food service transfers together. And I see what happened. I think Jan put the food service budget appropriation transfers 12.1C, and then forgot about the food service report. So that's, we'll just do a double check on that for next month, and I apologize for that, but I'll make sure you guys get both reports. But as part of keeping and trying to be transparent, so, and I know you can't do any transfers today, because we don't have enough for a quorum. But, so I was going to be looking to try to take the October, November, and January invoices and expenditures from the operating, putting them back into the food service account where they belong, and then having the board do a transfer into the food service fund from operating to cover that, as well as take into account the March invoice, which was $43,684. Stephanie, I don't know, do you want me to go through all of these? Or do you just want me to, transfers, or you just want me to wait till next month to go over them when everybody's around? I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. I think it'd be best to table the transfers at this point, just so we don't have to, you know, make you go through that twice, if we're not even going to vote on it this time, if that's okay with you.
That's perfect with me.
And it's okay if we table it, it's nothing terrible is going to happen?
No, nothing terrible is going to happen.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question, Stephanie?
Sure.
Or Eva, the transfers, or any, I know that we can't vote on it, but we did discuss, you know, ensuring that anything that we agreed to in Scenario 4 would be voted on in April and May. And I just want to make sure that those things do not get pushed aside, and that we are surely doing what we said we are going to do in funding those projects.
So knowing what I know today, I can, I can put the purchase order through, or allow Michael to do the purchase order, so that the flooring, the carpeting can be ordered. And then, in May, we can catch up. And then in May, we can catch up with the, with the approval of the transfers.
As long as that's okay. I know there's not enough people here to vote, but I just want to make sure that we stick to our word. Or I stick to mine anyways, to make sure it's brought forth.
Mrs. Wilson is raising her hand.
I just wanted people to know that I showed up, if that makes a difference with the count.
Unfortunately, it doesn't make a difference with the count, Jean. I saw that you came on.
Sorry, I had a workshop. Work has to come before Board of Ed.
I understand. It's okay. Yeah, we, we don't have a quorum, even with you tonight. So we'll have to, we'll have to table it. You know, if, if anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to ask, even though we're tabling it. Joe, any questions?
I do. I, I just like to know if, is there any relief from the state? I'm assuming that every school district is in the same boat as we are with this food at a significant loss. Are we going to be able to recoup any of this money through the state?
So there are conversations being had and there's a big push by SNAC, which is the School Nutrition Association, CASBO, ASBO, not ASBO, the superintendents group. Everybody seems to be trying their best. The state of Connecticut itself is trying to work with the federal government. The American Relief Package or the new AR, the new legislation that was signed into by President Biden was supposed to have something in, in there in terms of that. But I'm not sure where, because we still haven't heard all the nuances or the ins and outs of what we're able to put into the grant. So I'm not sure how to answer that question. Right now it's still a holding pattern at best.
We, we were told today, Joe, that it wouldn't be until mid-May before we learn of what the guidelines will be for the, the new aid package. And whether we'll be able to use some of that to offset the losses for the lunch program.
Okay. My other question, thank you for that. My other question was the CIP project memo you put out. Identifying middle school courtyard project was over by $4,700.
Yes, so that was a project from fiscal year 2019. So as you heard the auditor say, they want us to start accounting for it by project, not just in the account itself. So the account was never over, the project was. And the reason that happened was the way that, so rather than invoicing us or maybe retelling us to redo the purchase order by the project. We gave the purchase order as one lump sum to the vendor. And then when we paid the bill, we paid a little bit more for the middle school courtyard project, even though they were all sidewalk repairs. So at no point in time did the account go over. It was just that one particular project. And the sidewalk repair that was also part of the capital improvement project was underspent by that amount. So the two net out to a zero. So I'm just doing the cleanup for this in terms of just keeping, zeroing out every project. So they're at zero.
Okay, thank you for that. But what was the project? Because I don't remember a middle school project.
So apparently in 2018, 19, there was some concrete work that needed to be repaired or replaced at the middle school. And if I'm not mistaken, this may have been in the best. So you know, if you come into the middle school, there's the long glass where the parents would drop off. If you go out to the back where the grass is and then it goes up to the staircase, that doesn't really go anywhere except for the high school. There's some work that was done there.
Okay, so that was part of, that wasn't a separate project. That was just lumped under con, under the concrete funding number. Is that right?
Well, yeah, so in, in the way that we're tracking it now by project, it was a project that was voted on, I believe, as one of the items to be have, to have been passed. And middle side, middle school courtyard was one, and then system wide sidewalk repair was another one. And that's why that, that happened. If we could have just done it all as system wide sidewalk repair. I'm not sure why it was broken out separately.
Okay. And this is, this is for two years previous?
Yeah, 1819 was the fiscal year that it happened in. And just like in this current fiscal year, there's an 11 cent deficit for the carpet replacement. So like I said, I would rather zero it out than have a negative number stand in there.
That's fine. I'm sure we had to do the work. I just didn't remember the middle school project being on any of our capital.
I can, you know, I can get that information sent over you tomorrow. So I'm, I'm sure we have it listed out that way because we have a nice tracking system for projects now that, that we're following. And it's actually, it's a nice way of tracking items.
Okay, thank you.
Eva, I've got a quick question. The field drainage transfer that we were supposed to vote on this evening, it looks like. If we put that off till next month, that's not going to set the project back or we won't run into any problems as far as getting that started?
So in essence, the bid opening, I believe is May 6th, if I'm not mistaken. So the awarding of it might come in, well, it all depends on, on. So I can't speak for the board. I guess, I guess is my question. So if the board were to approve it, that would be wonderful. But if we don't have a quorum, we can't do anything with it right now. It would just be a matter of a week or two delay in terms of awarding the contract, basically is what would happen.
Okay.
Well, Stephanie, that, that is, that's probably, you know, if whoever is going to get the job is probably thinking of already, you know, ready to start the project.
But in essence, the work can't start, well, actually it's field drainage. Not sure when the project would actually need to start because of athletics that would be happening on the field. So I'm not sure what other work, prep work can be done. So basically it would have to wait till May 17th for the board to approve or award the, the contract anyways. So I think we would be right on point for May 17th for all the award and the transfer in the same night.
Right, yeah, the work's not going to start until June.
Okay.
That's different than the irrigation updates, right? Or is that the same thing?
That, that's different. Yeah, the irrigation updates was in the capital budget. That was part of that, that whole plan. The, the drainage for the competition field is using the money that was budgeted for this year, not money being budgeted into next year.
Well, to go back to the drainage project, I mean, it, you know, look with, it's like everything else with COVID. Materials are scarce, right? I, 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 I'm concerned about the, that if we open the bids and we were supposed to give, you know, the notification. And then people are going to start to order that. Walk me through the process, Eva. Are we giving them a purchase order immediately?
No, 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 no. So what, what's going to happen is so we, so we're going to open, so Scott, Mr. Leslie, Michael Schlehouffer and myself will sit and open up the bids. BSC Group will take a copy of the bids and they will review them. So we will notice what the dollar amounts are. They're going to go through it for each nuance and make sure that we're looking at apples to apples proposal. And tell us who they feel would be the best person or company to work with. On May, no matter what happens, we have to come back to the board and the board has to give the final nod to say it's okay to go with this company. In essence, you're allowing us to contract with this company based on the, based on the bid that was, and the awards that were presented to us. And the recommendation of, of BSC Group at that time. So that would be a Monday night. So following that Tuesday, we would enter into contract negotiations with that company. I'm assuming it would be straightforward. And then just Mr. Leslie would sign off on it. The company would sign off on it. And then a purchase order at that time would be cut. So Tuesday, the 18th would still be sufficient time.
Okay. And when does our meeting, once the next meeting to, to get these transfers and everything approved? Is it the 17th?
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Eva, does that cover all of it?
That covers all of me.
All right. Thank you very much, Eva.
Thank you.
All right. Next. Is 12.3 returning to in-person Board of Education meetings?
So Stephanie, I'll, if I could start. You know, the, the, one of the reasons why this agenda item is here is that a number of the other local boards have returned to in-person meetings. I think Andover, Hebron and Marlboro Elementary Schools, their boards have all gone to in-person meetings. And, and I know that some of the other town boards are still remote, yet in the process of planning for when they'll go back to in-person meetings. So, you know, obviously we're, we're, we will have to go back to in-person at some point. That's certainly the right direction to go. I'll, I'll throw out a recommendation just to get some, some conversation started. And I think this is probably another decision that will have to be weighed until, till the next meeting. But my recommendation would be to consider keeping remote through the May board meeting. One, because we, there, there are enough board members, I think, that are not here tonight. I wouldn't want to make a plan and then find out that for some reason they weren't able to make it. Two, we do tend to get a pretty good turnout to the remote meetings. And it, it appears that our May meeting is going to be chock full with a lot of really critical things that we need to get done. And I know spring is a tough time to bring people together anyway, so that, you know, possibly keeping our regularly scheduled remote meeting may ensure that as many people as possible can make it. Our, our June board meeting is actually scheduled for the Monday after graduation so that our kids will all be out of the building. And I would suggest that the board consider returning to in-person meetings in, for the June meeting. That would also allow us to invite Scott Fleer and Dave Ustanian, who had served on the board, but we never really got to thank for their contributions to the Ram Board, since we unfortunately were in COVID when they left. So we would allow, I think, the board to, to take care of some things that were a little more difficult remotely. Hopefully would allow us to take care of some of that critical business that'll need to get done in May and then begin the process of reopening our meetings. It, it seems that if, if things are moving in the positive direction and continue to move in the positive direction regarding COVID, that we should be absolutely fine. We would certainly make sure that we have the technology to allow people to, you know, ring in remotely if they chose to try to do so. So, so that would be an option as well to do more of a hybrid meeting. So that if members of the public wanted to participate, they could still do remotely.
Scott, would the room be open to public to come in? Or?
We can, yes, we're, we're, we're big enough, Stephanie, so that even with, with space limitations, we would be able to fit at least as many people as typically show up to a meeting. But then again, we could also have some, you know, remote access if that, that was going to be important.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is the first meeting and I can't remember how long that we haven't had a quorum. And I, I think keeping May remote would be good because I think people are planning on that and, and, and make, it makes it easier. And since we don't have everyone here tonight, I think, I think that's a good idea. And then we can.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Jean.
So I kind of like the idea of a hybrid. I, I feel like your participation rates in the public might get higher if there was some way where they could actually be in the, now that everyone knows how to do this. In the past, we've sort of had a phone call in. Would you be able to do a hybrid where, where they could see you at least and, and kind of hop into this? And, and do you have the technology to do that and then pipe in their questions so the Board of Ed could hear them? I think that would be ideal. I think it would increase participation.
Sure, yeah, we can, we can do that. Yep, I agree with you, Jean, that the, you know, going back to the, the phone wouldn't suffice. So we would, we would take advantage of the, you know, our experience and the new technologies to, to give some video face access as well.
Would we have to write something for future meetings about that? How people like, I don't know if it's a policy.
We had a policy.
For our, Jean, are you speaking about for us personally or for public?
Yes, for us to, to join remotely. We did pass that. I remember that.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Kathleen, I think you're correct in that we would have to explore what, if any, policies would need to be developed to allow this to happen, to support it. Because I think, you know, at, at some point, we're going to have to decide whether this is going to be the normal way of doing business. You know, or do we, do we provide a cutoff and say that we'll provide remote access up until a certain time? And then, so I think you're right that we're going to have to. You know, my suggestion would be to try it for a few meetings and, and get a feel for how it works and how effective it is. And then we can work with shipment. I know that other districts are certainly having the same conversations. And so, you know, we'd benefit from any other policies that might have been developed already or that are in the process of being developed.
Thanks, Scott. That's what I was, I was thinking about was more of how we would manage the meetings. And public comment typically when we are in person, the public is usually, you know, we can see them. They state their name. They state where they're from. And, you know, I don't, I'm not advocating for, for that. I'm just saying that that's the usual process. And how would that, how would we manage it or how would a Board of Ed manage it with the options that Jean, you know, you know, I agree with those options. I'm just saying, how do we manage that?
Well, we also have a policy on how many times you can call in as a board member, right? From.
No, we wiped that out.
We did?
We did.
Yeah, I think we did. We have to, you know, Joe, we'd have to go back. I can't remember, but I do think that we, we got rid of that. But I, I think that's probably something we have to review in policy again, I guess.
Yeah, I, 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 maybe I missed that, but I do think Jean is right about some policy. I don't remember what the wording was, but I remember the policy before that was, for like my situation, you know, I would always most likely call in because of my traveling. But there was a limit, I thought, how many times I could call in, right?
Joe, I argued pretty heavily against the notion that we might have a whole bunch of public sitting in an empty course room and no Board of Ed members there because they didn't have to show up. And I was upset about it at the time. And I, I lost that vote.
So you were, you were, you were favor of, of having more, everybody calling in? I mean, at that, as an option, right?
No, I was in favor of keeping the limits and we didn't keep the limits. We said, you don't have to show up ever if you don't, that's my recollection. People correct me.
Okay, well, I mean, I would, I would support that. I don't, I don't think I was part of that vote. But I do remember that I did say that, you know, for the people who were traveling, like myself and Scott. And I know, Jean, you're, you're, you're working a lot as well, but it would be, I think this is going to change how people are going to conduct meetings. There's no question about it. And I think that it would behoove us, this has been something that I've always asked for the last, over the last four years, that we, we step up our technology, we put money in the budget to get the technology level where we needed to be. And, you know, I, I think with our IT director, we should be definitely stepping up our game to, to prepare us for that going forward because I, I do believe this is. because I, I do believe this is how people are going to conduct business going forward.
And at the same time, we, we might have to revisit, what does a residency requirement look like if you're remoting into every meeting?
Yeah, the, the, the updated policy does not have a limit on how many times you can log in electronically. What it does, what it does speak to is there's no participation in executive session electronically, and there's no participation in an emergency meeting electronically. So I, although there's, there's no limit on the number of meetings, we certainly would have to revisit the, the policy. I, I don't think that you were thinking of, of a pandemic when that policy was, was written. So, and the aftermath of that, so.
Yeah, we were talking about telephones.
Well, and I think, Joe, to your, to your point, you know, we've proven that organizations can be just as effective working and communicating remotely as they can in person. So it certainly doesn't replace in-person meetings, but I think we've learned that, that people can be just as efficient. So I'm sure we're going to have to modify that policy some more to move, before we move forward.
I agree, and I think what Jean said, I mean, it's increased, I think it's increased participation, you know what I mean? So I, I think is this, you know, this pandemic has definitely changed us in a lot of different ways, some good, or actually, I think a lot of the good, some bad. But I, I, I think we just need to evolve from this and, you know, and, and come out of it with, you know, again, I think that if we pass that with no limits on how many times you can call in, that's, that's great, I love that, you know, so.
Okay, so we'll keep this as part, part of our discussion in the next meeting as well.
Yes, and to, to your point, Scott, I, I want to, you know, thank you and everybody who, who does all this and sends out the reminders for us and sends out the links for us over and over again to make sure that we can be here and participate in having the board packets delivered personally to, to me while I'm out in my driveway and ensuring that, you know, it does run and it functions. So people don't know the extra steps that you take to make sure that this happens. And I would like to thank you and everybody, you know, who drives up my driveway.
We're happy to do it.
How often do they do that? I've only seen that once.
We've done it a few times. We've done it for some of the larger pieces and.
I do remember it being, you know, tossed on the front walkway, and I was like, wow, but only once. Usually, I get it in the mail.
It might have depended on the committee you ran to.
All right. Okay, so are we ready to move on? To number 13, reports, facilities, safety, transportation. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening. Joe, I think you missed the last meeting. I think I was the only one there, was with Randy, our fire marshal was there. We talked about the, the doors, the fire doors and the dampers. So that, that was the, the subject of the last facilities meetings. Finance, audit, compliance, and insurance. Someone want to speak to that? The next meeting's scheduled for May 27th. Was that one that was canceled recently?
Yes, I think we just canceled that one.
Yeah, we canceled that one, okay. Negotiations, we're meeting on the 29th. And policy is coming up tomorrow night as well. Anybody want to speak to the last policy meeting? That one was also, I think that one was also canceled. So, okay, program communication, the next one is scheduled for the 27th. I believe that one was canceled. Yeah, I'm not sure. When was the last policy?
Yeah, I think, I think the last one was canceled.
That one was canceled, okay. So the next one will be May 27th. And then facilitator Judy is not here to speak for East Con or Cave. So we will move on to number 14, public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. And then in your packet, you have informational items, 15.1 calendar of events and 15.2 student discipline. Any questions for Scott or Michael on that? Or Penny, I should say? All right. We are tabling executive session to next time. So there's no executive session tonight. So I guess we are on to adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, good night, everyone.
Thank you, have a good night.
Stephanie, what time's our meeting?